Good evening, and welcome to the July 18, 2017 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:08. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian, Devine, Najarian, Sananian, Mayor Carpettiyan.
Here.
What's next?
Next is the flag salute led by Councilmember Najarian, followed by the invocation, which will be read by Chaplain Al Garsalazo from Glendale at Venice Medical Center. Please rise.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
I invite you all to bow your heads with me. Dear God, we are glad to be here tonight at the city council meeting, and we thank you for the civil and religious liberties that we enjoy. I pray that you will bless our mayor, city council members, city workers, and all the residents of Glendale, where we continue to be a shining light and a beacon of hope. Now please direct this city council meeting. May our words and actions reflect your love and your grace, for we ask all this in your name. Amen.
What is next, please?
The agenda for the July 18, 2017 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Friday, July 14, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Next, under Presentation and Appointments, at 3:08 is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, July 25, 2017.
Ms. Beers.
Mayor Carpettiyan, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, for July 25th, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon, we do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council to commence at 3:00 PM. Director of Community Development, South Glendale Community Plan, Environmental Impact Report. Director of Community Development, this is regarding the Mobility Project Update, Citywide Pedestrian Plan, Citywide Safety Education Initiatives, and Non-Infrastructure Safe Routes to School Program. Also that afternoon, we have Director of Public Works. This is regarding SB 1, Report on Transportation Funding. Director of Public Works, this is regarding Subregional Traffic Management Center. Director of Community Development and Public Works, the Glendale Burbank Regional Streetcar Feasibility Study. And lastly, Director of Community Development and Public Works, update regarding regional transit projects and studies. In the evening, to commence at 6:00 PM for the Glendale City Council meeting, we have one item under consent, City Clerk. This is legal advertising for contracts for the city of Glendale, and it's in connection with Spec. 3648. Under Action, we have Director of Public Works. This is regarding an amendment as needed facility services, contracts for heating, ventilations, and air conditioning, custodial electrical plumbing, and industrial doors and gates contract. Lastly, under Hearings, we have Fire Chief. This is regarding weed abatement charges for the 2016-17 fiscal year. And that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And what is next, please?
3B is Mayor's Commendation to Dr. Kent Small, ophthalmologist.
Mayor Carpettiyan and council members, I very much appreciate this acknowledgement that you have bestowed upon me and my practice and my research. I moved here in 2004 and set up a private practice after having been a professor at UCLA, and with that, I brought my research on molecular genetics of macular diseases, specifically macular degeneration, which is the leading cause of blindness in the developed world, including here in Glendale and the Armenian population. When genetics, we use sometimes various populations that can help us find new variants in the human genome. I was actually the first person in the Human Genome Project to identify the first macular degeneration gene back in 1990, and I've been working on this ever since. I've been recently working with the Armenian population and the Armenian National Committee of America in helping find new variants that are unique to the Armenian population. These new variants will help us develop new pathways and treatments for this blinding disease. I very much appreciate how well you have welcomed me into your community and how fruitful and productive and enjoyable it has been working with the Armenian population and here in Glendale. Thank you.
Don't go away, please. We have come to the podium, please, yes. We do have a Mayor's Commendation for you, and thank you for everything you do, especially in Glendale, that 50% of the population is Armenian, and I'm sure you said that you thank us for welcoming you to Glendale, but we thank you for being here and for everything you've done for our community. I do have a Mayor's Commendation for you, which I'd like to read. I truly commend your passion, hard work, and expertise as an ophthalmologist. Your aspiration to conduct research and help in an effort to find a cure for a serious disease such as macular degeneration is both phenomenal and inspirational. Your findings have given hope and helped many members of our community and across the world. Thank you for serving as a shining example to all, and I wish you continued success on all of your endeavors.
And I also want to thank Glenn Yamada for bringing this to our attention. Thank you, Glenn.
What is next on the agenda, please?
At 3C is Appointment of Board and Commission Members. These are the nominations made by Councilmember Najarian on July 11, 2017. C1 is Chris Cragnadi, Historic Preservation Commission. C2 is Zaven Hanesian, Building and Fire Board of Appeals.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian.
I'd like to move the appointment, the reappointment, actually, of Chris Cragnadi to Historic Preservation at 3C1, and also the appointment of Mr. Zaven Hanesian to Building and Fire Board of Appeals at 3C2.
Is there a second? Yeah. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Carpettiyan. Yes. Next item, please.
At D1, D is Appointment of Board and Commission Members. These are the nominations of Councilmember Agajanian, made on July 11, 2017. D1 is Ara Haronian for Building and Fire Board of Appeals. D2 is Ramela Markarian for Transportation and Parking Commission. D3 is Vahik Saturian, Planning Commission. D4 is Suzanne Wolfson. This was incorrectly listed as Parks and Culture Commission, is actually Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission.
Okay. Mr. Agajanian.
I would like to move the appointment of following members as Board and Commission Members.
Okay. So D1, 2, 3, and 4.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Is there, there's a card on this item?
Yeah, before we take a roll. Mr. Mohill, Mike Mohill.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Two minutes.
My name is Mike Mohill. I'd like to know what the qualifications are to be on a board or a commission. You know, often you say, well, he or she has a background in, let's say, art, or is an accountant or CPA. That's good to know. The other question is, has that particular candidate contributed campaign contributions to that particular councilperson? And if he has, there's nothing wrong with that. However, I think any campaign contribution over $100 should be noted for the public to know that this person is more than just an associate. He's looking for influence. Because, you know, I find that, as long as I've been coming to see the council nowadays, it seems to me that our boards and commissions are the farm club for the next generation of council people. Councilwoman Laura Freeman was once a board member, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Sananian, Mr. Hard time to... Okay? And I'm not being critical, I'm just saying, it's the farm club. You can't be a council critic like Mike Mohill and be on city council. But we should be able, the public should be able to know who the boards and commissions are and have they contributed more than $100 to the candidate of their choice. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Agajanian.
By the way, those whom I offered, none of them gave me anything, and before also the others with which I offered, nobody contributed to me anyway. That's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, but our campaign contributions are all online, they're all listed, we report everything, so it could be all research. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Carpettiyan.
Yes.
One more question I have. What happened to my Roland Kedikian? That was my nominee, and I said I want to delay it for one week.
And I apologize, but I think our understanding was that that was going to come back two weeks after we had the chance to vet the issue with the FPPC, in addition to bringing back the other report that you and Councilmember Najarian asked for with respect to hard term limits for, I believe it was for DRB and civil service. So we are intending to bring both of those items back next week and...
All right. So all of it will come back next week?
Yes.
The report and... Okay.
Mr. Mayor, will you indulge me a couple of minutes?
Yes.
I do see one of the candidates that was just approved for a commission position in the audience, Susan Wolfson. I want to congratulate Susan. She was a fellow candidate just a few months ago on the campaign trail, and I have to say, what a pleasant, intelligent, wonderful individual she is, and what a great addition she's going to be to our Parks and Rec Commission. So congratulations, wholeheartedly.
What congratulations? Any more comments? No? Okay. Next item, please.
Next item is the Consent Items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before motion is proposed.
Any comments?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Carpettiyan.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next on the agenda, City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments?
Comment, or two.
Okay.
Comments? I have lots of comments.
Would you like to start?
No, you go ahead until I find it.
First of all, I just want to congratulate staff and Parks and Community Services for Cruise Night. It was fantastic, tons of fun, lots of people, great cars, just a fun community event again. So congratulations on a job well done. I also want to congratulate the Commission on the Status of Women on a very successful endeavor. As you know, Mr. Mohill mentioned that some of us come from commissions, and this happens to be where I received, I guess, my training, was on the Commission on the Status of Women. But they held an accessories drive for Dress for Success in Los Angeles in June, and they were able to donate 140 items consisting of handbags, shoes, jewelry, and scarves. Dress for Success provides clothing to disadvantaged women, including women from Glendale, to arm them with the confidence they need to obtain the job that they deserve. And in addition to clothing and accessories, they are provided with interviews, coaching, mentoring, and networking opportunities. They are currently in partnership with Capital One, which is in Glendale, to provide financial literacy courses here at the Capital One at the Americana. Thank you again to Glendale Commission on the Status of Women for spearheading this effort, and to all those who donated to help empower women to achieve economic independence. Thank you all. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
I just want a few items which the, I mean, the public brought to my attention. One is this trash bean removers, that little pickup truck's driver. Everybody's complaining that they get out of the subterranean parkings and they go back and forth, and they drive dangerously, their moves are very dangerous. And so I think I should bring to, I guess, Mr. Gulanyan's attention or city managers. The next thing they brought to my attention I didn't know about on Harvey and closer to Glen Oaks, East Glen Oaks. They say where the In-N-Out Burger is, and there are some people, I guess, they racing, car racing is going on around 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM, actually, like midnight. And that's Glen Oaks and the Harvey and Chevy Chase, that area. So they were very concerned. The third thing is lights for, you know, that on the poles, there are name of the streets, most of them, it's hard to read, there is no lights. So the name of the street is hard to read at night. And one more item that Los Angeles County Civic Grand Jury last week, they came up with this report, and they went through 421 police chases, and they came to the conclusion that during that period, three people killed and over 10 people, 45, I'm sorry, 45 people injured during past year. And after reviewing, this Los Angeles County Civic Grand Jury came to the conclusion 91% is response to no violent crimes. I mean, people, they want to be famous on TV, so they run away and police, they chase them, and even a young kid, 15-year-old Jack Phoenix, I guess the name is, was killed by cartiff while they were, the police was chasing the cartiff. And they're fleeing from LAPD where the police and the criminal were driving 90 miles per hour on the city street. So I just want to see what our police department, if there is a policy and what will be the policy. So I didn't, I don't hear anything, I don't see anything car chasing in Glendale, at least I don't remember. But I wanted to bring to city staff's attention, this was a report in over 100 pages, and they reviewed 421 police chases. The other one is, I emailed to city manager staff and city council members, is the Ford Explorers, where carbon monoxide getting into the vehicle, police car, because Ford is saying that because police stations or police is, you know, modifying the exhaust system or some sort of modification is happening on Explorers, on the police vehicles. However, I am concerned because Austin, Texas, they grounded 37 Explorers, and City of Los Angeles is looking into this matter. So I spoke to chief on Saturday, this past Saturday, but I just wanted to bring to city managers and city attorneys' attention also to look into this matter. Thank you.
Any comments? Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. I'll be brief. You know, we continue to hear about property crimes being committed by the parolees and the early released felons and misdemeanants, and I would like to, especially in our canyon areas, so I'd like the city manager, perhaps with the chief of police, to come back and discuss with us the feasibility of placing a police substation in the Chevy Chase Canyon, perhaps co-located with the fire station, discuss the costs, the staffing issues. Of course, we may have to be cutting the police budget if there's a negative result on the general fund transfer, but let's leave that aside for now and talk about increasing the service to our residents in that canyon by way of a substation. Thank you.
Councilmember Sananian.
I'll be brief as well. Just want to echo my colleagues' comments regarding Cruise Night. It was a great event, it's one of my favorite events in Glendale, everybody knows that. It's, I don't know how many people participated, I think it was like over 40,000 people, it was, it was an awesome night, and the weather was cooperating as well. Also this morning, Glendale hosted a regional HUD meeting, which is a Western regional meeting with the LA HUD office, and the purpose of this meeting was to review HUD's new strategy for cities to develop partnership among all levels of government and the private sector, including both for-profit and nonprofit organizations, in order to better assist lower-income people. Through this conference, it was, it was very successful, and it was, it was well-attended. The libraries, the second floor auditorium was packed, and we showcased Glendale, our downtown, also all the projects that we've done through CDBG, housing and the homeless programs that we have. Also, since, yeah, we showcased Glendale well today, and I hope we can do more of this, more of these events. I want to congratulate the housing department, Moses Carrillo, they did a great job, everyone that was involved. Okay, what is next, please?
Next is community event announcements and oral communications. Do you have any cards? 15 and 10 portions. There were no cards submitted for this portion.
Okay.
That'll bring us to 8A under action items. 8A is Director of Public Works and Fire Chief regarding five basic life support ambulances. 8A1 is resolution to dispense with competitive bidding and authorize a purchasing manager to procure over the next five years from Braun Northwest Inc. for a total not-to-exceed amount of $1,239,000.
Mr. Gulanyan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. We have a very short PowerPoint presentation while it's loading up. We currently have 12 ambulances in our fleet, and we are planning to replace them one a year over the next five years to seven years, or approximately 90,000 miles. Next slide, please.
Do you want the chart?
Yeah, yes, thank you. So back into 2013, we realized that we can actually be more cost-effective and save money in the long run by using new models that are designed as a two-piece unit, separating the chassis from the patient treatment modular box versus a combined unit. Next slide, please. In this way, rather than replacing the entire vehicle, we can just replace the chassis due to wear and tear and excessive mileage. So we currently have five Braun Northwest ambulances on Dodge chassis, and we are requesting to dispense with competitive bidding to replace five more over the next five years. Braun can mount these modules, these module boxes, on any chassis, be it Ford, GM, International, Dodge. The cost for the first unit first year is approximately $225,000, and for the following four years, it'll be adjusted based on inflation. Braun modules, module boxes come with lifetime warranties if they are asked to remount these modules. If any other manufacturer mounts them, the warranty is obviously avoided. Also, our fire department has found that the combined material safety and design built into the Braun ambulances are not available by any other manufacturer products. At the end of the fifth year, we'll have a total of six frontline and four reserved Braun ambulances. With that, we are respectfully recommending your approval to authorize staff to purchase five Braun units. The first two units have been appropriated in the current, the previous and the current year budgets, and the next three will be brought to you as part of the respective budget processes for your approval. processes for your approval. With that, fire chief and I are available to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
Yes. So, you are replacing the chassis and engine, let's say, between five and seven years to replace one?
Mr. Mayor, yes, councilmember Agajanian, approximately every five to seven years, they accumulate around 90,000, 90,000 miles. That brings them to the end of their service life.
It's like 13,000 miles a year.
Approximately, yes.
And the old box, then you were able to sell it?
The, the Braun manufacturer box, we will remount onto other chassis that we have that currently don't have the Braun modular boxes, because they come with a lifetime warranty.
Okay, thank you. This, absolutely, go ahead, Najarian.
Thank you. Just a question on that warranty. Is it a top-to-bottom warranty, or is it only major components? I mean, we've heard in a lot of places, we've all experienced, you know, trying to make a warranty claim one way or the other. It appears that one of the major factors in going this route is a warranted care module. So, let's just make sure that it's not, you know, you know, they have all these exceptions and ifs and wherefores and legal disclaimers and exclusions. Let's make sure that it's truly a, you know, top-to-bottom, I don't wanna say bumper-to-bumper because it's, there's no bumpers involved, but, you know, wall-to-wall, top-to-bottom warranty on it, because that's really, for myself, that's the deciding factor in maintaining these and just replacing the chassis underneath.
Councilmember Najarian, we already have five of these, so we've had experience with them. You know, granted, they're only five years old, the latest one, but we make sure that the warranty covers every aspect of the modules.
Any more questions? I have a couple of questions. So, we are replacing the chassis, not the boxes?
Mr. Mayor, we actually, for the next five years, we are replacing the ambulances, the chassis and the module.
Okay, that's what I was getting to, because $225,000 for the chassis is it. And first year and second year, they are appropriated, 2018, 19, why is the cost going up every year? I mean, first year is 225, third year is 247, the last year is 272.
Mr. Mayor, we've made provisions for inflation, CPI, and these are just estimates. Once we get the actual quotes from the manufacturer, it'll be closer to what we have estimated.
So, if you don't use that, the entire million 239 that goes back to?
Yes, sir.
Your fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a speaker card, Mr. Mohill, Mike Mohill.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. I know that council is very much concerned about the cost of our ambulance service. You know, if we had a private ambulance service rather than Glendale Fire Department, we wouldn't be going through this exercise this evening. Is this, is this ambulance meeting code, let's call it code, the standards required? Why should this council be involved with this technical detail? If you contract with an outside ambulance service, you wouldn't be worrying about that, because I'm sure the ambulance services have to meet the standards required by the state of California. We don't have to worry about, is it tall enough, is it high enough, is it safe enough? I don't think councilmembers are expertise in ambulance service and equipment. But there's a company like Schaefer, it's been around for years. You know, before we had Glendale Fire Department do our ambulance service, we had a company like a Schaefer, who's doing the service, the ambulance service for the city of Glendale, at about a half a million dollars a year. And we were not stuck with the pension costs either. But with Glendale Fire Department doing the ambulance service, they get a pension, don't they? So, my, my point is this, why don't we outsource the ambulance service? We don't need to have it part of Glendale Fire Department. I believe the word "fire department" means "fire." What fire is there with an ambulance? Are we a fire department, or are we an ambulance service? Oh, excuse me, according to former, what's it called, Fire Chief Harold Goggins, he said that over 85% of fire calls are, are medical-related, 85% and more. Fire Department's not putting out brush fires or going up the tall buildings, that's a minor part. So, if 80, over 85% of the fire department is, is medical-related, why don't we hire out an ambulance service and not worry about the equipment? You're counting on someone else from staff. And does our staff, are they experts in, on ambulances? I doubt it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Roll call, please.
I, we need a motion in a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Senayan?
Yes.
Mayor Garpetian?
Yes, next item, please.
Sir Mayor and council, A B is Director of Community Services and Parks, Library, Arts and Culture and Community Development regarding development impact fee imposition on accessory dwelling units. B1 is a motion directing staff concerning calculation of the proportionate fair share development impact fee for accessory dwelling units.
Good evening, Mayor Garpetian, members of the council. My name is Teresa Alexanyan, and I'm the Community Services Manager with Community Services and Parks. Before you today is a PowerPoint regarding accessory dwelling units. On February 7th, 2017, city council adopted an ordinance, an urgency ordinance to establish interim development standards for ADUs and identify procedures for approval of ADUs in Glendale. Ordinance was adopted in response to changes in state law requiring that ADUs be permitted. Prior to the passage of state law, Glendale did not, Glendale prohibited ADUs. An ADU is an attached or detached residential dwelling unit, which provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. It includes permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on the same parcel as a single-family dwelling. Glendale's ordinance currently allows ADUs of maximum of 500 square feet, but state law does allow up to 1,200 square feet. The current ordinance that Glendale has also requires that the property owner must either live in the primary or accessory dwelling unit, or rent and lease the property as a single rental unit rather than separately renting out the, the primary and accessory dwelling units. And short-term rentals of less than 30 days are prohibited, according to the current interim ordinance. The purpose of this meeting is that in, during the 1718 budget adoption meeting, council expressed, asked, expressed concern regarding the amount of the current DIF fees as it's applied to ADUs, and asked staff to bring back a report looking at some options. Staff has identified two different methods to calculate a proportional fair share of the DIF fees for ADUs. So, we're here today to present to you those options and get council direction on how to calculate that fee. To briefly provide some background on development impact fees and the history of how we came up with the, the fee amount, development impact fees address the city's deficiency of park and library facilities by ensuring that new development pays their fair share of the costs associated with the growth. So, DIF fees include parks and library mitigation and also Quimby fees, but for purposes of ADUs, we're not gonna look at Quimby fees because it, it's part of, it, Quimby fees are for subdivisions, and ADUs don't, are, can't be subdivided. So, in September of 2007, council adopted an ordinance and approved a resolution which authorized the collection of parks and library fees, and the, the DIF are collected on commercial, office, industrial, and residential development. In 2007, the fee for residential units was established at a phase-in rate that would gradually increase over 11, over an 11-year period. So, it would go from, it would phase in from 3,500 to 10,500 by 2014. But the full cost based on a NEXUS study that was done was $18,213 for single-family and $15,645 for multifamily residential units. In January, council directed staff by approving an ordinance and a resolution to increase the fees to the amounts determined by the NEXUS study to be the full mitigation of the impact of new development on parks and libraries, and to update the amounts reflected based on construction costs. So, the current ordinance does not permit a fee reduction for secondary units, like an ADU, and is based on the average occupancy of the average square foot of residential units. It assesses the same fee, no matter how large or small the unit is. So, whether a, a house is 1,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet, the fee is the same. The current fees that for development, the current development impact fees for parks and library mitigation are as displayed on the PowerPoint, so it's 1,000 for single-family residential, for the library, it's $1,945 per unit, and for parks, it's $19,883 per unit. So, a total of $21,828, $828 would be paid by a developer in building something in, in Glendale. The fees are based on a NEXUS study, as I mentioned earlier, that was conducted in 2007, and it's based on the Mitigation Fee Act and the Quimby Act, which governs development impact fees. The NEXUS study describes the city's standards for parks and recreation facilities, and the cost for parks, and same for libraries. So, the cost for parks and recreation facilities, construction, and the cost for new residential units, and commercial industrial square footage, and it looks at similar factors for libraries. So, some of the factors that are considered in the study include demographics, facility standards, the cost per capita, and density. So, staff has looked at some options for council consideration as it relates to ADUs. So, the city can calculate the DIFs for ADUs using the cost per square foot method, calculate the fee based on the cost per capita method. Council can choose to keep the current fee as is, as it applies to ADUs until a updated NEXUS study, until staff updates the NEXUS study, or suspend the collection of development impact fees on ADUs until the NEXUS study is updated. So, to, to look at the two methods of calculation, if we're looking at the cost per square foot method, for looking at single-family residential, the single-family residential fee currently is $21,828, and the average size of a single-family dwelling unit per the study was 2,571 square feet. So, if you take and divide the cost by the square, average square foot, you get $8.49 per square foot. Currently, the maximum size for an ADU is 500 square feet. So, if you were to take the cost per square foot and multiply that by 500, you would get $4,245. So, that's one way to calculate the fee. So, a developer that was proposing to build an ADU and, and came to pull the permit, the fee they would pay is $4,245. The other method to consider is the cost per capita method, and the cost per capita method is based on 2.98 residents per dwelling unit. So, again, looking back at the NEXUS study from 2007, the persons per dwelling unit for a single-family residential is identified to be 2.98 persons per dwelling unit. So, if you take that divided by the fee, the cost would be $7,324, and that method is assuming that you have one person living in an ADU. So, that's an assumption we would be making with that method. Just for comparison purposes, so we talked about single-family, if you were to look at the multifamily, doing the same method of calculation, the fees would be $5,205 for multifamily if you use the cost per square foot method, and $7,324 if you use the per capita method. Just as a way of comparison, staff did a quick survey looking at other agencies, and the, the list is up there. So, we looked at Pasadena, Burbank, Santa Monica, City of Temple, Temple City, City of Rosemead, Portland City, Paso Robles, City of LA, and City of Long Beach. As you can tell, the, all the cities except for City of Los Angeles are currently charging DIF fees for the ADUs. City of Los Angeles has liked it to exempt fees on ADUs, and the next column says existing NEXUS study includes ADUs. So, whether their NEXUS study, the NEXUS study that was completed in this city's, whether it includes ADUs, because as it stands today, our NEXUS study does not, and the no's mean that their NEXUS study does not either. So, only two cities, and that's Portland City and City of Long Beach, have either conducted new, a new NEXUS study that incorporates ADUs, or their existing study already included ADUs, because at the time, their city was allowing it. So, staff is here to seek council direction on how council would like to consider ADUs in the interim, and we will return with an updated ordinance and resolution and/or prepare an updated NEXUS study if that's what council chooses. I would be happy to answer any questions council may have.
I have one, one speaker card. Let me go to the, to the speaker, and then we'll come back to council.
Good evening, Darrell Ford. I live here in downtown Glendale on West Wilson Avenue. Just to speak very briefly to this item about the potential revision of the mitigation fees that would be charged to accessory dwelling units. I think it's important that the council always recall that the mitigation fee act has five critical findings that are necessary when you adopt the mitigation fee. One of those findings is about proportionality. So, you're required to, when you adopt your fees, make sure that they, that the fees you're charging are proportional, that the each unit or each person, or wherever the fees are derived, are being charged what their share of it is. So, when the city did its NEXUS study for this project, it came up with a per capita formula, as the staff just discussed, based treating every unit the same, with the same number of folks in every unit. The two methods that are before you, the potential methods that are before you, of course, for consideration, one that's based on a cost per square foot, and one that's based on a per capita, these weren't studied in the NEXUS study. These are not the methodologies that the city of Glendale has adopted, a flat fee, right? A flat fee, every dwelling unit pays the same regardless of 12,000 square foot home, a 10,000 square foot home, or a 500 square foot home. Every unit in the city's study pays the same, because that was what was studied. The two fees that are before you don't meet that proportionality test, because the NEXUS study didn't give consideration to these two types of formulas. Yes, the information within the study can be derived from it, but this is not proportional to those other fees. And why I bring this up is this, because when you look at the, the examples that are provided on Slide 11, you see that what, the two ideas that are being proposed here, one talks about simply charging folks in an ADU, essentially assuming that three people would live there, but the staff said, again, the assumption would be that one person lives there. Again, not something looked at or discussed in the NEXUS study. So, that's essentially moving off from what the city looked at in its mitigation fee act compliant and required study. The second thing is talking about a square foot basis. Again, not something that's studied in the NEXUS study. The reason why I bring those up is because imagine you're just building a, a home, a regular home, not an ADU, and you're required to pay the dwelling unit fee. Well, why doesn't an ADU get to pay a fee based on the size of its house, if you pick that formula? Or why doesn't an ADU get to pay a fee based on one person potentially, when everyone else has to pay based on 2.98? So, adopting either one of these methods wouldn't meet the proportionality test. You'd be treating different units differently. And that wasn't studied or adopted in the beginning of the NEXUS study. So, the recommendation I would make to the council for its consideration would be to take the time, not charge ADUs the fees, until the NEXUS study can be updated and that proportionality test could be met, again, one of the five required findings of the mitigation fee act. Thanks.
Thank you. Going back to council, who else will go first?
Well, I have a question about delaying and the, or foregoing the fees until the NEXUS study. How long would that be? And would we also stop the building of ADUs, or giving up, you know?
No, it's not the, the opposite.
Applying for permits, how would that work?
Yeah, you wouldn't, in my view, be allowed to, since we have a process to apply for ADUs, you wouldn't be allowed to hold that process. ADUs, you wouldn't be allowed to hold that process in advance while we update the study. So we could either update, do a study more specific to ADUs, or I think within the work plan that we have is, was to update the NEXUS study for parks and libraries at some point, just to look at, to make sure that the current fees were accurate. So we could roll that into that, or we could just do, we can do an updated study as it pertains to ADUs. It's really the council's direction.
When it's going to be done, the next ADU study?
I don't know that we had a timetable for it. I mean, we were trying, there was some direction we, council's given us on, in general, on other fee studies, including transportation and traffic. I think when that gets going, they were going to be rolled into one. So, but there was no timetable yet, except for that.
But I thought previously has been said that will be done by August.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's for the, the ADU ordinance to, for the standards for ADUs.
That's what I'm saying. The ordinance will come back at August.
I don't know.
Probably later this year, November, December.
Okay. So I have a suggestion for the fees then, if that's the case.
Can we go to the questions, the comments first, then we'll come back for?
That's the comment too.
Okay.
Go ahead. But I can wait, that's fine. If you want to say.
You start or just go ahead and finish?
Okay. I was suggesting if, for, first, I mean, we have lots of garages which is converted to ADU or mother-in-law unit. So I suggest we come up with whether an exemption, not to charge any fees, and this way to ask public to come forward, or we don't want to make it an exemption, I mean exempt, from paying any fees until the study comes back whenever, in November or October, whenever has been set to exempt it. Or in alternative, if we have to charge a fee, I would suggest for single family unit, the average for five hundred square feet of property will be four thousand two hundred forty-five dollars. And if we consider this is like a multifamily residential, the fee is five thousand two hundred and zero five. So I suggest the average of the two, which will come to four thousand seven hundred, that will be the fee.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Who's next? Mr. Sinani?
So just to clarify, the cost per square foot methodology doesn't automatically assume that everyone pays for the full five hundred square feet, right? We would treat each ADU individually, calculating whatever their square footage was, multiplied by the per square foot amount of eight forty-nine, and apply that price to the fee, correct?
Councilman Sinani, I think in the method that is being proposed, it would be a flat fee. It wouldn't be calculated based off of the size of the unit, because the current fee is a flat fee no matter what the size of the residential unit. So what was the method being presented, but that doesn't mean council can give different direction.
Why can't we be more flexible? For example, I am looking at Portland City that has a range of five thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars, all the way up to thirteen thousand forty-nine dollars, based on square footage. And this addresses Mr. Ford's concern, which is, why is everyone going to be charged for the full five hundred? What if someone's, someone's ADU is three hundred square, I don't know how practical that is, but what if it is? Why should they pay for the full five hundred?
Just to, Councilmember Sinani, for Portland, study the way that they have it is a range. So they have like zero to seven hundred square feet is X amount, seven oh one to...
That's Portland?
Yes, that's what theirs is. So it's based on square footage, but there is a range. It's not, I come to build, I come with plans that say it's three thousand square feet, therefore you take that, multiply it by the fee. So theirs is a range that the, the study identified.
And the reason we don't want to individualize each ADU is because we don't want to get bogged down in the sort of the details of...
We can do certainly whatever the council's direction is, but considering that the state law, I think, allows a maximum of twelve hundred, our interim ordinance limits it to five hundred, our estimate is that that's probably a good, nice, round number in keeping at that. But if council wanted to go per square foot or break apart those ranges, as Teresa's explaining, we can really do what is your pleasure. But I think your point's well taken, that five hundred is, is, doing a three hundred foot ADU probably isn't as practical. If you're in for three, maybe you're in for four. If you're in for four, it's probably five, if your property can accommodate. So it was just a nice round number, so nobody could say, I got more, or I got less. It's five hundred and that's the number. But we can do whatever, your pleasure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. So taking it a little further, so this assumes that when this issue comes back to us in October, November, whenever it is, so that the temporary emergency ordinance comes back for review, we stick with the five hundred square foot ceiling, right? What if we don't? Does that mean then, then this would have to come back and we would have to go through this whole process again?
In all likelihood, if we came back with, say, a tier of different sized ADUs, we would probably tier the fee accordingly, as Portland in that example did. But it's all a function of how, what size, what kind of limitation, if any, does the city council want to put on the size of those ADUs.
I'm just not excluding the possibility.
Sure, sure. But I mean, at this point, I couldn't tell you because we haven't drafted that ordinance as yet.
Mr. Mayor, just clarification, the ADU ordinance will come back with a range of, we may not be back at the same time with the NEXUS study and the fee study. So if we did have something larger, Mr. Ochoa suggests, we could give you a range based on the same methodology we used here.
Right. So I guess since I'm on it, I might as well just...
Go ahead, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm looking at these DIF fees for all the, all the other cities, not all the other cities, but the sampling that's been provided to us by staff. And I, and I see that with the exception of Pasadena, which ranges between eighteen thousand and thirty-four, thirty-three thousand dollars roughly, we are the most, we are currently charging the most amount of money for the ADUs. And I mean, other than basically Pasadena and Glendale, no one is even close to that range. Our immediate neighbor, Burbank, charges two thousand four hundred and two dollars for single family homes and seventeen hundred seventy-seven dollars for multifamily units, and so on and so forth. Even Santa Monica, which is reputed to be an expensive city, things cost much more there. Their range is, you know, the, on the higher end, it's seven thousand eight hundred and nine dollars for a single family unit, and four thousand two hundred thirty-one dollars for a multifamily. Some of our neighbors, like City of Los Angeles, don't charge any, anything for ADUs. I guess they, in some cases, they don't charge anything, in other cases, for multifamily, they charge two thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars. And I don't want to belabor the point, I think folks can see the numbers on their screen, the difference between what we charge and what the bulk of the other cities charges is drastic. And I think that's indicative of the fact that these cities are not trying to create artificial impediments to the creation of ADUs, something that the state has mandated us to do. And I think it's the healthy approach. I think it's unfair to require folks who are merely having, you know, a small five hundred square foot unit have to pay twenty thousand dollars in impact fees, because there's no proportionality there, there's no fairness there. I'm inclined to go with the cost per square foot evaluation, because it's logically based, it seems to be fair, and it's fair to all, everyone involved, not only the homeowners who are creating the ADU or have the ADU and are legalizing it, but also to the city, which will gain valuable funds in the form of impact fees.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Najjar?
So, everybody knows what the park situation is in Glendale, and I don't think anyone can reasonably deny that we are severely underparked. Not only that, but the parks that we do have are very much used and overused. Ask any AYSO coach, ask any Little League coach, ask anybody who's trying to find this tree to sit under on a hot weekend. The parks are full, packed, and we don't have enough of them. So the purpose of the, this impact fee is to permit the City of Glendale to acquire more parks to accommodate the extra population that's going to be living in the city as a result of either single family residence construction, multifamily unit construction, or in this case, accessory dwelling unit. The, the fact is that in a, I'm giving all benefit to, to residents, the five hundred square foot unit ADU is going to have at least one resident, if not two or three. In this calculation, the city staff has given the benefit and used the extreme, the extreme outlier number of just one person as an assumption. We know there may be two, there may be three. I believe that we should use the cost per capita calculation as, as truly the, the best representation. Now, I do feel that when we do our new NEXUS study, that the, the true cost of each additional resident in terms of park and library impact is going to be much higher than what we have. These numbers are at least six or seven years old. Has the cost of acquiring park space gone up in the last seven years? Way, if not, you know, double, if not a very high percentage factor. So the eighteen that we charge now per ADU is, is too high. Doesn't seem fair, because the assumption is that there's two point nine eight people living in each unit. Bring it down to the very lowest number possible of occupancy, because we're not, it's not the square feet of the unit that use the parks, that use a library, it's the number of residents. So to use anything other than an assumption on the number of residents in that unit would be, would be getting off track. So let's assume and give the benefit to those folks constructing an ADU that they're only going to let one person in, and then use the same factor that we use, that we used for the single family residential analysis back six, seven years ago. I think that's the fairest thing. Looking at these other, you know, looking at these other numbers that the other cities charge really is not a fair comparison. Glendale is very unique. Glendale has limited park space. City of Los Angeles perhaps has a lot more than we do. That's why they don't feel that they need to charge for a single family residence. Burbank is much different. They've got loads more park space. Santa Monica, half the city is a park. Glendale is a unique situation. So these, you know, the comparisons that we have are not, I don't think they're very helpful. I mean, each city is unique, each city has its own level of park space, each city has its own level of tolerance and need for additional parks. So I would say, let's give the benefit of the doubt, one, assume one person living in each ADU and use the per capita, single family residential until such time as we complete the NEXUS study, and then make any adjustments, and at least discuss it at that point, going further.
Yes.
Okay. If, one question, if we do the per capita calculations, how would we enforce that? I mean, people change how many, you know, their rental?
It's just a fee upfront. It's assuming there's one person per capita and they're paying it.
Yeah, it's an assumption, yeah.
So there's no enforcement in there.
Okay. All right, so if I may continue, I, the, we don't want the fee to be counterintuitive. I mean, the intent of this legislation was to, you know, bring about affordable housing, housing for, for more people. So whatever the fee is, it has to be, as far as I'm concerned, it has to be lower than what we're charging for single family units. I am in favor of the, the cost per square footage. I think it's not overburdening the homeowner. I also agree with Councilmember Sinani, and I thought it was, going on this, this logic, I thought it was going to be like, what is it, eight forty-nine per square foot, so somebody, because yesterday we were talking, we had a conference with, with one of our residents, and she wants to build an ADU, and we said, well, five hundred square feet. And she said, oh, well, I was thinking smaller. So there may be people that want to build, you know, for, they know it's for only one person, and so they think they, you know, they don't need five hundred square feet. So I thought it would be eight forty-nine per square foot, feet, square foot, feet up, up to five hundred right now, according to what our temporary ordinance. So I don't think that would be overburdening the homeowner that wants to build this. I think we're still getting our staff, our staff fees for processing these permits, and I think we're still getting some impact fee for parks. So I'd be for the square footage.
Okay.
Connotation.
Thank you. I have one question, maybe it's not on our agenda, but I have to ask this question. Part of the temporary ordinance that we approved, it has to be owner occupied, right? They have to live in the house in order to build an ADU and rent the house?
One of them, one of them needs to be owner occupied or the whole property rented to one family, so that you didn't have multiple families.
Got it. So one question on slide six. Do single families pay this amount too? I mean, if you want to build a new house on your property, do you have to pay twenty-some thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yes. And in the multifamily, two hundred units times eighteen thousand eight eighty-five or whatever it is.
So single family, I didn't know that single families pay the same amount as well. I'm, I agree, I think the price per, per square foot is, is very logical and very reasonable, because if you build a five hundred square feet, you pay eight forty-nine, if you build a three hundred square feet, you pay eight forty-nine per square foot. But I want to understand, how did you calculate the, the per capita? Because twenty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars on slide 11, if you don't Right. So two point nine eight people divided by twenty-one thousand, you're at seven thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars. Am I correct?
Yes. Three people, three people. Two point nine eight.
Two point nine eight.
Two point nine eight people divided by twenty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars.
It's actually twenty-one thousand eight twenty-eight divided by two point nine eight.
Two point nine, yes. So that's seven thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars. But this, this calculation is for a single family house that is about twenty-five hundred square feet.
The, Mayor Garoppolo, members of the council, the two point nine eight was based on the study, so in 2007 when we did the NEXUS study, the study assumed that a single family residential unit would occupy two point nine eight residents, and that was based on building and safety information, according to the study.
I'm sorry, twenty-five hundred seventy-one square foot of house would occupy two point nine eight.
Correct.
So that's what I'm getting to. This number is, if you, if you count, if you even everything up, that seventy-three hundred twenty-four dollars will drop down to somewhere to four thousand again, because these two point nine eight people are living in twenty-five hundred seventy-one square foot house versus...
So we were calculating a per, per capita person in a, in a single family house. So that's where you get the, so it's two point nine eight for, justifies that fee of the twenty-one thousand.
Okay. Let me, let me just recalculate it another way. If it's three people, divided by twenty-one thousand, it's seven thousand dollars, right? And if that three people, if you divide that to twenty-five hundred seventy-one divided by three, your square footage is about eight hundred and fifty square feet. So your, your ADU is five hundred, when you're going per capita, you're not comparing apples to apples, that's what I'm trying to, to get to. I understand the, the, the three occupants for a single family of twenty-five hundred seventy-one square foot, it will end up to seventy-three hundred dollars, but if that house was fifteen hundred square feet with two point nine eight people, then this is a correct comparison. So I think, I think...
That's a good point, Mr. Mayor, that's a good point. And, and what we're trying to express, whether it's fifteen hundred feet or forty-five hundred feet, you're paying the average, everybody is.
Okay. So I, I think, I agree with the, with the price per square foot, eight forty-nine a square foot, and whatever that number amounts to, forty-two hundred forty-five dollars. I think that's a fair way of, of doing it.
But two different numbers.
But two different numbers for a single-family and multifamily.
For a single-family.
I averaged it. The average between the two will be 4,700, so...
Why do that when we can have two different amounts for... Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
Between single-family and multi, the average is 4,700.
So let's say 4,700 up to 500, as, on the, say, the, each unit, they pay, single-family unit, they pay 21,000 regardless of what the size is, or multifamily pays 18,000 regardless of what the size is. So let's say up to 500 is 4,700.
Is that the engineering-based approach? I would support that. I would support that average of 4,700.
Yeah, because I want people to come forward and make it legal, because we already have people, they are living in the unit, so, okay.
Is that a motion, Mr.?
Yes, I'm suggesting the fee of 4,700.
Mr. City Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Do we have a second?
Yeah. Councilmember Sinani has...
Roll call, please.
And just so we're clear, um, the, the motion is, is going to be directing us to bring back, uh, a fee resolution or amendment to the fee resolution to lower the fee for ADUs.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Uh, I guess, is there issue, I guess they're discussing, or can, I can vote?
No, no, we're good.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
Devine?
I think, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. We have a card, we have a card. I was, I don't want to, I don't want to forget you, Mr. Moehl. Come on up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moehl.
Mr. Mike Moehl.
Thank you, councilmembers. My name is Mike Moehl. I remember reading a study that, uh, Mr. Najarian brought up the, the parks and how we're depleted, we don't have many parks, he says. My study shows that only about 10% of the general fund goes for a Parks Department, and we count on 90% for grants from the county or the state, or maybe the federal government. We've got plenty of money, it's being transferred from what, from the general fund, the park fund, to CalPERS, to pay the pensions. It's all about the money and the pension. So when Mr. Najarian says, "We need the money," he's absolutely right. We need the money. We need $17,000. That was the number you mentioned, Mr. Sinani, you're right. This, Glendale is the only city, the highest amount. Why don't we have more parks? You know, we used to have a piece of real estate on the corner of Wilson and Brand, it was empty for many years, and I went before the city council, I said, "Let's make this piece of real estate a park." City said, "No, we'd rather sell it and make money on it." There are many opportunities for parks. Central Park was once a park, actually was a park, before it had a library on it, before it had an adult recreational center, and now we're going to have a museum on it. No, the city council gives lip service, and the people who want parks don't get parks, but the special interests get what they want. The money is going again, being transferred out of the Parks Department to pay for our CalPERS obligations again. Now, if you tell me we weren't taking the money out of, from Peter to pay Paul, I would feel okay, but the working folks want to have parks, and you take that park money and you give it to the city workforce again, as usual, I don't think that's fair. And to go ahead and charge this high fee for the granny flats is not fair either. What does Glendale have to have, have the flag of, "We're the best"? No. Let's be the lowest, if we're going to charge a fee, let's be known as the lowest fee, not the highest fee among the cities. Thank you, Mr. Sinani, for bringing up that point.
Thank you, Mr. Moehl. Now, uh, maybe have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinani?
Yes. Mayor Garpetian? Yes. And I want to thank Theresa for a very good report.
34 begins to drop down and rather precipitously as the UAL is fully extinguished. And through attrition, you see the end of the enhanced pension promises, a very significant drop off there as we get into 2040. I mentioned SB 400 and why that was so dramatic. You see that the impact was to provide overnight benefits to folks even though they had not paid into PERS at that heightened benefit level. But once the state of California provided those benefits to its employees, the cascading impact as more and more agencies, PERS and non-PERS members began providing equivalent benefits in order to stay competitive in the marketplace. The idea for us is that we need to pay down and ultimately extinguish that UAL. PERS, to its kind of dubious credit at this point because of the poor planning and some of the outright bad decisions that were made intentionally in some cases as well as unintentionally just for lack of foresight, has begun to start calling things by their right names. And so what you're seeing is CalPERS is no longer allowing for a rolling amortization. What that means is that that UAL has been determined to be repaid to PERS for the system over the next 30 years, recouping 100% of that UAL as opposed to continually just rolling forward and hoping and expecting through gains in the portfolio gains and the stock market gains through some of their investments that they would be able to recoup that. For the city of Glendale, that's important because the vast majority of that burden does fall on the city's general fund as you see here. At the same time, PERS is also recognizing that people are living longer and adjusting for mortality, they are ramping up their costs. And most significantly, what you're seeing is the same thing you're seeing across the river in the city of LA in a non-PERS self-funded system, the reduction in their discount rates for LACERS going down similar to what you see here with PERS. With PERS, we're happy at 7.5%. They were not making 7.5%. All that was doing was increasing that UAL such that PERS finally came to grips with the reality that over the coming period of years, they would drop that discount rate from 7.5, the return that they see on their investment portfolio down to 7% is the direction that they're going. What does that mean? Well, obviously, it means that for PERS members, their employer and their employer rates do go up. For our employees, because our employees in the city of Glendale pay a portion of the employer rate, the employee cost goes up as well. What we are looking to do in terms of mitigating that PERS impact that we can see on the horizon, we know it is out there, we have seen through the adjudication of court cases that the absolution for the PERS obligations is not something that is likely, let alone assured, from Stockton to San Bernardino cities that were poorly managed and were not prepared to handle the increasing costs of their operations. Certainly for a city like Glendale that is well managed, that does have a handle on its operations and its long-term liabilities, we would not be able to fare nearly as well by way of the mercy of the court in our case because we have significant assets. But we still have to find a way to mitigate the impact of PERS over the long term on the general fund. Again, we're trying to keep that number at or below 20%. We, through the good work of the council and the community development and former redevelopment staff, through the successor agency, were able to secure from the state of California through litigation, a repayment of a loan that was due from the city to the redevelopment agency. And the amount of money that would be repaid that ultimately is one-time funds that we would recommend not be used for operations but rather be put away for that proverbial rainy day that we know is coming, provides what amounts to a nest egg that with council direction, we would be able to invest and be able to use the investment earnings compounded on itself to effectively shave off the peaks of the coming PERS rate increases to the tune of what you see here, $35 million has been the recommendation by staff over these last few months. That means that unlike the city's existing investment portfolio that is governed by the city treasurer and laid out in terms of what the restrictions are by way of the city's code and charter whereby looking at safety, liquidity, and yield, we actually have an opportunity to go towards longer-term investments that would generate, we believe, a significantly higher return than the 1.5 that is currently being realized year to maturity or yield to maturity in the city's treasury. We would be looking to partner with a firm called PAR, their investment manager Highmark and the trustee US Bank and be able to do that in a manner that is similar to what you see for the IPAC, the city's investment policy committee whereby through the city treasurer's office as well as appointed staff, they are able to help monitor and ensure the safety, liquidity, and yield of monies that would be invested through this program being recommended to you tonight. As I mentioned, the goal here is not so much to extinguish the PERS unfunded actuarial liability, the UAL, because that is again in excess of or nearly $450 million. Rather, what we are looking to do is shave off those peaks. And so what you see on this slide along the top is again that familiar curve increasing upwards and the dotted line represents the period of time that we would begin drawing funds out of this trust and using said funds to offset our increasing PERS costs thereby taking pressure off of the city's general fund and thus allowing for funding to continue to flow to other city projects, programs, and services funded by the general fund which could be anything from public safety to libraries to parks to any of our other operations again within the general fund. We are focusing this, as you know, on the safety rates simply because those are the more expensive of the two rates, safety and non-safety. But again, the idea is that if you took that $35 million, beginning with the $26.5 million that is part of the resolution of appropriations for tonight, along with two more years' worth of investments, sock that away for a period of time, let it grow, and then begin to draw it down over a period of time, we can realize $60 million, a little more than $60 million worth of benefit. So you see that here in this slide. Now, one of the other requirements of this strategy is to take the city's code-required general fund reserve of 30% of appropriations and bring that down to 20%. The city council has the target of 35, the policy of 30, and what we would be recommending herein is to take that to 20. That would allow us to free up funds to put into this account and provide us the latitude to grow these monies through investment and continue operating the general fund. Now, your staff report outlines a couple of different ideas that have really emanated from council, and you see this matrix here before you, to a combination of ideas. The $35 million that you see there along the left-hand side over those three years, 26.5 in this current fiscal year, I believe it's the 3.5 and then the 5 in the subsequent two years respectively, and you see the 20% minimum reserve level in the general fund and the 25% minimum reserve level in the general fund. And the next level, the next row that you see there is the $26.5 million and then the same kind of calculation that you would see both at a 20% minimum reserve level as well as a 25% reserve level. The difference there is that the city council would basically be saying, we don't want to drop our general fund reserve level down to 20% as was originally recommended. We would rather be more prudent and keep it at 25%. And we show you again the math in terms of whether you put $35 million into this trust or 26.5 million in the trust. As I say, this is what you would be looking at by way of scenario 1A. This is the staff recommendation, 20% general fund reserve, socking away the full $35 million. And again, you've seen this chart. However, if we were to move in a different direction by way of $26.5 million, meaning the appropriation that's before you today and nothing more, and still maintain the 20% reserve level, you see a slight difference in the drawdown of monies. Obviously, we're investing less, so there's less money to recoup. And the idea is that you are able to realize some benefit, but again, not nearly the benefit that was outlined in the previous slide. Here are the savings, or rather, the benefit to the general fund is about $47 million versus $60 million. The other scenario, so here is 1A and 1B. I know it gets very, very busy and we apologize, but as was requested by council, the opportunity to show you how this all kind of fits together. Here you see the $35 million put in and the 20% reserve level versus the $25 million reserve level. And again, the idea there is that by maintaining a higher reserve level, meaning that you would draw monies out sooner, so you're still putting in $35 million over this year and the coming two years, you simply start withdrawing funds from the trust sooner in order to maintain that 25% reserve level. And you see kind of what the extinguishing dates are for the trust. If we keep it at the 25 minimum reserve level, we start drawing money out sooner and thus the trust is extinguished faster. By the same token, if the council wanted only to move forward with the $26.5 million, you see a similar kind of requirement here or you see a similar type of dynamic here with respect to when you draw the monies out, what the impacts are, what the ultimate benefit to the city is as well as time goes on. One of the other items that is important to point out is what happens to that general fund reserve. What you see on this slide, this is option 1A, $35 million, 20% minimum reserve, and you saw, you see the drawdown from left to right of the fund balance percentage while you have that trust. And you see it moving from 31% is the general fund reserve balance down to 20% as that moves from left to right with the new proposed floor at 20. What you see, the next bar up or the next line up is the fund balance if you do nothing. Again, because we can anticipate what is going on with those PERS rates, we believe that without establishing and setting aside money now, that we will in fact, one way or another, be dipping below the 20% floor as we get further out into years 30 and 31 when those rates are really getting up higher such that our general fund reserve level will be around 18% versus the 20, let alone the 30 that the council currently has as policy. The upper line shows you what the fund balance percentage would be including the trust equity. And I think this is an important dynamic. Certainly, the council is aware of this because it gets discussed quite a bit that this is an irrevocable trust, meaning that the dollars that are set aside and invested and earned can only be used to pay for these retirement costs. Some have utilized that term irrevocable trust to mean that city council could never access those funds once they are placed into the trust. In reality, what this strategy allows you to do is to use any of the dollars that are in this trust for your retirement costs. And what you see today is that in the general fund even, we go from a $24, $25 million a year payment to PERS up to a doubling of that cost to $47, $48 million just over the next five years. What does that mean? Well, it means that you effectively could liquidate this trust in the space of one year, thus freeing up an equivalent amount, an equivalent amount of money in the city's general fund to be used on whatever it is that you choose to use it for. So is the trust irrevocable? Yes. Is it completely immutable in terms of how it would ultimately be reconfigured to be used as you see fit? No, because you would be able to liquidate the trust, free up those dollars in the general fund, and use them for whatever you saw fit. What you see in this, again, a very apologetically busy slide, is the relationship between that 20% fund level, option 1A versus option 1B, the 20% reserve level versus the 25% reserve level. And what you see in the stars, the star shapes, is the final year of the trust. The yellowy goldish star is, shows you gets extinguished there going out to year 30, 31, whereas no surprise, the curve with the 20% fund level is able to make it out to fiscal year 33, 34. So it certainly is a function of how the council wants to address this issue and whether or not you choose to pull dollars out to make the PERS payment. Again, if we are earning, as you saw on the news this past week, PERS earned 11.2% for the last fiscal year, which is great, not nearly enough to offset, they would need several more, quite, not just several, but a number of years more at the double-digit level to start to really make a dent in that UAL and not pass along the savings in their investment earnings to cities. But if they have that discipline, if all the cities and members have that discipline, you can start to see that UAL go down. And thus, you might be in a position where you don't have to withdraw any of the money out of this PERS trust and let it bake, if you will, even further. By the same token, if the council decided that there was a better way to skin the cat, you would be able to liquidate the fund in the space of a year and use the funding for some other purpose. Because again, you can use it for any and all of your retirement costs. Here is just the same type of chart showing option 2A, 2B. This is instead of the $35 million and only using 26.5 million, which is the resolution that is before you tonight. And you see the relationships in the bluish line versus the yellowish line, 20% minimum floor versus a 25% minimum floor for the general fund reserve. And again, the 25% necessitates that you extinguish the trust sooner than not. It has come up before, council had asked the question, okay, well, how, if we did reduce the general fund reserve policy down to 20%, what does that look like by way of comparison with other places? As you can see, being very fiscally conservative over the years has served you well. We are at 30%. There's no other city that comes quite close, although Inglewood is at 25%. Most every other city around us is there around 20 or less. And so you would be in comfortable company in terms of the standard operating procedure about the amount of money that you keep in your reserve policy. So again, I know I tried to be as quick as I could, but understanding that this is a momentous decision, but council is very much aware of what the dynamics are because you've seen it many times during the budget adoption process. So to summarize, I would only submit to you that we do have a series of alternatives for you, looking at either the $35 million funding level over this year and the coming two years and making an accompanying adjustment of dropping the general fund reserve policy down to 20% or 25% from the current 30%. Or you can move with a smaller dollar amount of 26.5 million, meaning it would be dollars that we have held in reserve over the last couple of years but not put any new dollars into this trust account. And then again, be able to make the call as to whether or not you want a 25 or 20% general fund reserve. And then certainly, if council is of a mind to not make a decision, you can provide any other direction as you see fit. With that, I'm sure Mr. Elliott can answer questions as can Mr. Jacobson or Ms. Yisaians who did the yeoman's work on this program and the strategy over a period of time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ocha. I have a few speaker cards. I want to go to public first, then come back to council. Susan Wolfson, the speaker.
Hi, I'm Susan Wolfson, and I just wanted to ask a question about the investment fund that we're thinking about putting this trust fund into and just, or rather, to encourage council to consider the fee structure and be really careful about that because that can be a bit of a trap for the unwary. And hopefully, that's been vetted out really well. And also, I just want to encourage everyone to maintain a sense of urgency about making sure that we're being careful about increasing our financial stability and sustainability and not to get maybe, if we do this thing, not to become complacent and to think that the problem has been completely solved, you know, for the foreseeable future. That's my only concern about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Mike Mohill.
Time's up.
Evening, councilmember. His name is Mike Mohill. Well, city manager, smoke and mirrors again. This whole exercise is like a dog chasing his tail. The same old story. Salaries and pensions, we don't have any money for. $23 million, that $23 million should go for what? The substation that Mr. DeGerrin wants to have in Chevy Chase Canyon or the parks we should use. This money should stay in the general fund and not special because you know why? Because when this city will file for bankruptcy, this money cannot be used, okay? Yeah, cast. It's going to be used for the CalPERS people first, not the city residents. This is wrong. You know, according to Mr. City Manager, in four or five years, we're going to need $49 million obligation to CalPERS, $49 million. That's why he wants this $23 million put into this irrevocable fund, this trust fund. This is nothing but an insurance policy for bankruptcy. Staff recommends this? Of course, they recommend it. They're protecting their own jobs. They don't care about the residents of Glendale because they don't live in Glendale. Most do not live in Glendale, do they? They live out of town, but they want to live in Glendale because Glendale pays the best. According to Mr. DeGerrin, we have the best employees that money can buy, and he's right. We have the best employees that money can buy. And this guarantees making sure we put this money in this fund. No, sir. Keep it in the general fund so we can buy some parks, clean our parks up, fix our streets, fix our roads, have senior program, have public transportation. You know where we need to put the money. How about restoring the, what was it called? The Unity Festival. Remember, we used to have that a few years ago? But we canceled that because we didn't have the money for it. We're running out of money and we want to make sure we take care of our city employees first. I think we have the wrong priorities. This money should stay in the general fund and take care of public transportation, parks, streets, roads, you name it, senior program, the kids' programs, soccer fields, libraries, the list goes on and on. And you all promised to take care of the people first. When you sign off on this, you're telling the public that your first priority is making sure our city workforce gets their great salaries and even better pensions because after all, we have more people in retirement today than ever before, and that number is going to be growing more and more. This is nothing but an exercise of a dog chasing his tail. Why don't we just get out of CalPERS? I've asked you many times, leave this corrupt, irresponsible system. It's bankrupting us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next speaker is Sir Roland Kediken.
Can I get five?
Let's start with three, please, because I gave everybody a three minutes.
May it. I'll speed it up. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Roland Kediken, and I'm here again to urge you to not fund this pension stabilization fund. I came here before you previously, and at that time, Councilman Agajanian was not elected and this matter was postponed. As a recap, I informed you that basically you are providing additional guarantees to the employees. I informed you that there is no guarantee that the promised return will materialize. And I also cautioned that it can only be successful if no funds are withdrawn and there is continued annual contributions. So any idea that the funds are there and can be withdrawn at any time misses the point that you will be wasting all the fees spent on managing this fund and not to mention any losses that they may have incurred prior to the promised return of 7% over the lifetime of this fund. Don't expect to get 7% every year from year one. I was also going to talk about this during the budget approval session, but Mayor Varpetian wisely pulled that matter out to be voted separately and requested the city manager to go ahead and establish the trust fund so that we can review those documents. I have reviewed the calendar item and the iPad version, and I have not seen the actual trust fund document. So I am not sure you can vote on funding something that has not been made public. I asked the city attorney after I conclude to make that determination. Now, it is important to know who is this fund is being set up for. If we had those documents, we would have known. Is it for safety employees or is it for the miscellaneous employees or all employees? It makes a difference because you can only withdraw one year worth of premium should you need to withdraw. And I can't tell if there is no trust fund documents I can see. And CalPERS maintains separates for safety and miscellaneous. All presentations I have seen indicate the purpose of this as being set up to fund the safety employees' retirement fund. If that is the case, I would caution against this unequal treatment of your employees, particularly when you are establishing a method to protect pension of one and not the other, even if the real purpose is for the city to make 7% return. I know when the coalition filed the lawsuit regarding the transfer, the IBE employees quickly jumped in. And as a matter of fact, the attorney for IBE were more involved in that litigation than the attorneys for the Glendale coalition. You can know from the attorney fees that they were awarded. So that kind of is a warning about unequal treatment of employees. There are so many ways you can use this 26 million. You can transfer the funds back to GWP and use it as a hedge against the litigation. It works similar to an insurance in that should you lose the lawsuit, either on transfer or Prop 26, you can argue that since the funds were returned, that amount should not be calculated in the damages, no harm, no foul rule. There's more. You can use the money to settle the judgment of 58 million and right the course of this litigation.
Sir, Mr. Kediken. The judgment and the transfer fund, the transfer litigation has nothing to do with this case that is before us with the, I understand where you're going with it, but that's a separate issue. And on this item, you can speak on what's on the agenda, but if you like, you can fill out the five-minute card and speak on that issue at the end of the meeting tonight.
I was just going to say, what's better ways to do this 26 million? And we're talking about spending 26 million.
We can, we can, we can fill out the five-minute card, speaker's card, at the end of the meeting at the oral communication section because that case has nothing to do with the trust fund. So I'm going to ask you respectfully to stop here and deliberate and come back to you at the end of the meeting.
Well, the 26 million gives you options. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on this. I have no other cards. Who wants to go first?
A question for staff.
Yes.
So let's just be clear on this, right? The monies that will be invested in this fund, it's an irrevocable fund, however, they can be used to pay down a premium, right, an annual PERS premium?
Our PERS cost could be utilized, yes. We would liquidate that to pay the PERS bill that year. In any one year, you could effectively liquidate the entire fund.
That assumes that your annual premium is less than the amount of money that's in the fund?
That assumes that, yes, that's correct. Although I believe you can go back this year and the previous year. So therefore, between the two, certainly at the beginning of this timeline, you would be able to liquidate the entire amount.
But that assumes that we're liquidating next year or this year, right? I'm saying, let's say, five years from now, 10 years from now, if we are making, it's a contingency. So we're hard-pressed, we're deciding that we're going to use this cash to actually make the premium payments, that way free up cash in the general fund. Are we limited to one year's worth of premium?
You can do one year plus the previous year.
Because there's two years.
Looking backwards, yes.
Okay.
So anytime you could liquidate it.
There's no way the two years of premiums are going to be less than the amount that's in the fund, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
So it can be liquidated in one payment?
Effectively, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mohill.
Okay. Who likes to go next?
Sir, I was going to ask the question that Councilman Sinanian already asked. So this is if later we want, we can pay the PERS, so we have the option to use this money. And the second thing I don't want to, I looked at the slide 20, and at this time, which is showing Glendale is... And at this time, which is showing Glendale is, we are, we are more cautious to do what we are doing. And I'm comfortable with that twenty-six million, five hundred thousand. Not to go less than twenty-five percent reserve because there is a city as, like Englewood, it has reserve, a minimum reserve of twenty-five percent. So I want to mention, I will be comfortable with twenty-six million, five hundred thousand with twenty-five percent reserve. And that's my opinion. As long as we can pay at any time, use that money and pay the PERS. If we see we need the money to return it. One more issue. I remember there was a gentleman here spoke about the fees. How much we were paying for managing the, managing the, yes. How, he's here. Okay. What, what were, what were the fees scheduled?
Would you come to the podium, please? Mitch?
Mitch? Rowdy?
What was the fee schedule? That's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, I guess you have for thirty-five million, but doesn't matter. Oh, okay.
Mitch Parker, Executive Vice President with PARZ. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. The fees between trust administration, trustee services, and investment management, based on twenty-four million, which is what the last council meeting was shooting for at that point in time, was a hundred and two thousand.
Per year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And there is no other fees involved?
No, sir.
This is just one lump.
There's an outline, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
I just decided here.
And that's based on the twenty-six and a half million.
Yeah. Okay. I have no questions.
I do have a question. I just want to make sure that council isn't locked into subsequent contributions after the twenty, original twenty-six point five million. Because in the, the most recent staff report, it says either alternative, the council can contribute twenty-six point five. And in the staff report, it cites that staff recommends thirty-five million. So, but I just want to make sure that if we decide tonight that it's twenty, we go with the twenty-six five, that we're not on any obligation to put any more in. Put that eight million. We can use the eight million for something else if we'd like.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. That is the, as I understand, Mr. Agajanian's motion. The twenty-six point five, twenty-five percent fund level and council can, can keep that the same going forward, can alter it, can do whatever you want to do. That is entirely council's perspective in the future years.
Okay. Well, then, I will say this. Looking at both of the altern, I don't have any questions for you. Do you have any questions for?
I don't have questions.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Has this account been established?
No.
Trust account? No?
No, you've adopted. But until we get all the documentation back, which includes the investment selection form, the account's not formally set up yet.
Okay, but why are we talking about this? Because last time that, last time that we, we, at the budget hearing, you mentioned that you have to establish the account first. Then you can talk about the amounts. The account is not established and we are...
We, we are in the process of doing that, getting...
Let him please answer. Is that what?
Yeah, so I, you wisely, in my opinion, chose to adopt the trust first and then appropriate the money and then choose the investment selection. Looks like the investment selection is also included in this, at a moderate level of risk tolerance. So we need that decision to complete the process.
Okay. So with the moderate selection of investments, what is, is this, these are the numbers that are in staff report?
Yes.
Okay. And the twenty-six point five million, the option be with twenty-five percent minimum reserve level, that's for fourteen years, our earnings will be sixteen point two million dollars. Am I correct?
Projected.
Projected.
Yes, based on a target rate of return of five percent, which is in one of the slides. And the historical rate of return for the moderate strategy over ten years is five point oh seven.
Okay. And are your fees included in that six point two million? Or excluded your fees at sixteen point two million?
I think it was not, it was not a fee. Yeah, it was not a fee.
These are not the fees?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember, goodbye.
Oh. Okay. Well, having looked at both of the alternatives, I think the most important question is considerate concerning the reserve, twenty percent or twenty-five percent reserve. And the advantage, of course, of the twenty percent reserve would be that we would have four point three million dollars more in alternative two to offset the general fund PERS contributions. And as you said, the trust would last for two more years, for two years more. That would allow the general reserve to drop to twenty percent from the thirty percent, which could be viewed negatively as far as impacting the fiscal sustainability of our city. In the alternative for the twenty-five percent reserve, the advantage, it maintains a stronger reserve policy, which I, I'm all in favor of. And it accomplishes the basic intent of the trust fund. The trust lasts two years less, however, and, and we also have four point three less to offset the general fund PERS payments. But I think the shorter period of time and lesser amount of funds available as in this alternative are not really that significant. So I would go along with Councilmember Agajanian and go with the alternative two with the understanding that the reserve would remain at twenty-five percent and that it will, we will not be locked into adding more funds in the future. We can if we want and we don't have to if we don't want.
So alternative to twenty-six point five million?
Yes, at twenty, and keep the reserve at twenty-five percent.
And are we voting on adding more next year or the following year?
No.
For example, if high mark return, if... If high mark return to higher than expected yield, rather than put new money in, you could just keep that money there and continue to have it compound. So really, the, the most important thing is for, is to establish the, the trust. And then council makes its determination year to year.
We can kind of see how, how it's going, how it's moving and then where we want to put the money.
So we can add or do not?
Yeah, that's correct.
Just look at it as a savings account.
And the important, the way I look at it is hopefully that it will make more money in the trust fund than it's making sitting in our general fund. And that's the important thing.
Hope so. Any more comments?
I'll just state that it's important for us to maintain a very healthy general reserve fund. And twenty-five percent really does accomplish that goal. At the same time, by investing the twenty-six and a half million dollars, as have, has been stated on, stated and explained on numerous occasions, is going to really help us cope with the increasing pension obligations. So therefore, I support the twenty-six and a half million dollar investment in the fund and keeping our reserves at the level of twenty-five percent.
Okay. I have a couple of questions from City Manager. Where is this, this twenty-six or twenty, thirty-five million dollars coming from again?
It currently is...
This is a one-time fee that you...
It's in the general fund right now.
It's currently residing in the, in the city's general fund. The bulk of those dollars are, are the result of the successful litigation with the state of California by way of the end of redevelopment.
Total was how much?
I want to say we ended up with little, little under forty million dollars from that litigation. So there is, there will remain, based on this option, if the council moves forward with it, that other eight million dollars that is still there in the city's general fund, as well as we were looking at, at moving whatever money we could spare into this trust. But if council just wants the twenty-six point five, then you will be, you'll have that extra cushion in the city's undesignated fund balance in the general fund reserve.
We will have eight million dollars extra cushion. And how long did it take us to get this thirty-six or forty million dollars from the Department of Finance?
I got here in 2012 and I want to say it was...
Several years.
By the end of the day, after both, after all the litigation, almost three years, Phil?
Three years, yeah.
Somewhere in there? I had hair when it started, put it that way.
Many trips to Sacramento.
I had hair when it started.
Like, I, I, I understand what my colleagues or the staff or, or finance manager wants to do.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just make sure everybody's on the same page. And if you look at any one of these charts, I mean, we've tried to parse out the, the net general fund, unreserved fund balance. And then that top blue line, as you see up there, is the total reserve plus the trust. And that trust amount, even though it's not in the unassigned general fund reserve, will be sitting as an asset in the general fund on the books. It will be invested as a, in an investment account. But we can, for, you know, our, looking at our total reserve, we can, basically, we will add that to what our total reserve is. So you'll have the unassigned fund balance plus whatever money is sitting in that savings account as you look at what, what do we have available to spend. So while we have to, for accounting, you know, pull that out and look at the unassigned reserve and that's the floor of twenty or twenty-five percent, we still have that cushion of that twenty-six and a half million that will earn interest over time and that is that top line. So just wanted to make sure that everybody's on board, that that money's not disappearing. It's just going to go from a cash account to an investment account on the books.
I understand what you're trying to do over here, but I want to point out a few facts so we all be clear on, on these issues. With twenty-six million dollars investment for eighteen years, for, are we doing the B, one B or two B?
Two B is what's being discussed.
So for, for fourteen years, our earnings will be sixteen point two million dollars. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So it's one point one million dollars a year, which is good money. I mean, I, I, I'm not disputing that. But you're locking about twenty-six million dollars for fourteen years to, to earn one point one million dollars. And this money can, we're going, we're going to start using these funds year twenty-four, twenty-five. And what this is doing is shaving off the top, basically. It's like two million one year, three million next year, five million some year. But, but with that, with those, you are spending the money that we have in the account as well, the twenty-six million dollars.
Correct, you're drawing down the principal.
Basically, this, in, by the year thirty-four, thirty-five, twenty-six million dollars is gone as well. It's not, it's not that you're just going to have that money in there and your, just your investment is, is being spent. My preference would have been to, since this is a new product, to start in a smaller amount for a year or two, to find out if it's really working or not and be a little bit conservative, maybe a few million dollars, but not twenty... We're putting all our eggs in, in this basket today. And my concern is the economy. In two or three years, four years, I don't think anybody can dispute that. We may have a correction. And at that time, we are responsible for taxpayers' funds. We are, we have to answer to our constituents. So I think we need to be a little bit more careful. I know where this is going. The votes are there, my colleagues are all for it. But it's one point, one million dollars out of eight hundred fifty million dollars budget. That's what I hear all the time when we increase the salaries, when we spend money on, on Grayson, when we spend money on parks, whatever we want to do. It's, they say it's a drop in the bucket. It's million dollar out of eight hundred fifty million dollar budget. So what I'm, and the other thing is our PERS liability from today until year thirty-four, thirty-five is almost six hundred and sixty million dollars. So we need to have a plan as to what is going to happen in year twenty, thirty, thirty-one. Besides this, because this is going to help like two million dollars out of fifty million dollars. So the, the amount of, of reducing the, the general reserve, I have a huge issue with that. I mean, twenty-five percent, what is it today, thirty percent?
Thirty percent with a target of thirty-five.
Thirty percent, what is it today, though?
The actual level is forty, forty-four percent.
So we're going from forty-four percent to twenty-five percent?
Yes, because you're super funded at this point. You have more money even than your target calls for.
So that, that thirty-eight million dollars is our general fund right now? That's why it's forty-four percent?
It's sitting in the treasury today, sir.
But you are allocating twenty-six million, five hundred thousand?
That would be our recommendation if that's the council's pleasure.
But the recommendation, the, the, what I see here today is the twenty-six million dollars.
Right. Twenty-six million, five hundred. One question, if I may. This will be for the safety retirees, right? Not both miscellaneous and safety, this is just safety?
We are pegging it to those safety fees, but it goes to the city's PERS bill, the check that we sent to PERS.
So it's not specific to the safety or to our account?
It's just for PERS. We have one big pot of liability, one big pot of assets.
Right, 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 okay.
And if you want to spend this, this, let's say, two, five years down the road, you want to spend the funds, how many votes do you need to spend the fund?
To liquidate would be three.
So it's not like you need four votes?
No super majority, that's correct, sir.
Okay. It's all right.
Whenever you're through, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Agajanian.
I'm glad to see that we're going in this direction. I think it's a decision that we're very fortunate to make. It's not often that the city gets a thirty-five million dollar lump sum from the Department of Finance. And to put this in our general fund and let it sit there and gain one percent, are we over one percent in our treasury fund?
Yes, we broke one percent.
Broke one percent?
Yeah.
To let this money, such a large sum of money sit there when PERS rates, as we saw, are jumping by five and six percent each, each year and in some years, would be a total misuse of this money. I, I think it's good that we're putting in the twenty-six. I think it would be best if we committed the entire thirty-five million and lowered the, the fund, the reserve fund to twenty percent. But I'm not going to let the good be the enemy of the best. It's certainly a step in the right direction. And I'm glad, I know we had some trepidations on this earlier as we were going through the discussion. But I think it's, because it's totally liquid, it's totally fungible. If there's a downturn in the economy, our one percent return that we're getting from our treasury, our financial instruments that Mr. Manukian's investing in, will drop as well. If our five percent in our moderate risk is going to drop to three, I can assure you that the one percent is going to drop to below one percent to the sixty, seventy point range. So it's a good thing to do. We're faced with these high PERS rates in the upcoming years. I think it's the only thing to do. And I think we're making the right decision. So I, from what I'm hearing, we're, we're on board in many of those respects, so.
Want any more comments? Go ahead.
I do. I just, I just want to say that I think when you look at the big picture, we can't, we can't just sit by and, and not do something to mitigate our PERS liability. And I think we've been trying, at least since I've been on city council and even before, to, to, to figure out ways that the city can try to mitigate this, this growing liability. So I, and also, this is a trend in a lot of big cities. I think the last time you, we had the report, there were like eighty cities that were doing the same thing in order to fend off or to, to be able to manage that peak when it comes. So I'm, I'm also, I've been for this, using this instrument, adopting this instrument since it was proposed. And so as far as the vote is, it looks like it's going, I'm also proud that we're, we're taking this step to try to mitigate our pension liabilities and, and make sure. And our main goal is, is definitely for the residents and to keep Glendale sustainable, to keep our city exactly where we are now with a, a good reserve and services that our city, our residents are happy with and that we're proud of. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. thank you.
I just want to offer my solution, so if there is somebody to second it, I will say.
I have a couple more comments.
Okay, no problem.
Again, I understand that we all want to do well, but currently we have so many projects that we've been thinking about, that we wanted to get and do and accomplish different goals. With this money gone, guess those projects could buy us well. And there are other ways of using some of these funds to generate as, if not more, same amount of money, revenues. And that's why I was, I was for maybe a smaller amount, but not the $26 million. That's, that's where I stand. Just to be safe and test drive it, this is a new product. I mean, why do we have to put all our funds in one, one fund and take a huge risk? I understand the economy goes up and down, but if you lose 10 percent of this fund, by the time you make that back, that 20 years is gone. But anyways, that's, that's my, my position. Again, I would, I would vote for a smaller amount, but not for the $26 million.
So, Mr. Mayor, let me get this straight. The money that we're going to invest in this account is coming from our general fund reserve, right?
This is the money that we got from the Department of Finance and is sitting in general fund.
Okay, in the absence of the money that we got from the Department of Finance, how much money was there? If we subtract that?
30, $60 million.
We'd be, yes, sir, we'd be sitting, tracking somewhere in that, in that neighborhood, $60-ish million, meeting our, close to meeting our target, the 35 percent. So as the, as the appropriation changes, so too does our percentage of what the general fund is because it's a reserve.
Would you urge a no vote, Mr. Mayor, on this?
No, no, but I'm not urging a no vote. No, but that's why I voted for establishing the account. I thought the account would be established and we would talk about the different options. But we are given two options. I understand the third option is for us to come up with a number, but we don't have the, basically, the revenue calculation of other numbers. This is just basically what was, what was basically presented to us in the beginning. This is the same thing. It's 20, 35 million-
Yes.
And 26 million, with two, two different options, one A and one B. My, my thing is smaller amount. You don't have to put $26 million, because this $26 million, you're not going to use this until 2024, 24, 25, which is eight years. So you have to let it sit there to gain interest, to start showing something that you can withdraw, maybe a million or two. On 25, 26, you can withdraw about $3 million from it. So that's when it accumulates enough interest for us to use the interest, not the, not the principal amount. So from 34, 24, 25, until 34, 35, within 10 years, we're going to spend at this average of $6 million a year. And that, that $26 million will be gone by the end of that, that year as well.
I, okay, I mean, to the extent that you're alluding to some programs, including the Maryland Paseo program, which some of that Department of Finance monies were supposed to be used for, or at least that was intended.
No, no, it's okay, so you can say, sure. We have, we want to, we all have our goals and agendas that we want to accomplish.
In any case, whatever programs, whatever programs that they are, I, I believe we all, we all expect our staff to work hard, to make sure that the funding is there, to implement whatever programs we envision for Glendale, one way or another. Because, let's say, if we don't, in the long term, if we don't allocate these monies to be able to pay for the, the PERS obligations, I mean, we're going to have to pay that money from somewhere, one way or another. So it doesn't mean that life's going to stop in Glendale. No, I'm just thinking through this. I'm not arguing with you, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I'm not arguing with you.
No, I know you're not. I'm just saying, don't take it the wrong way. You know, life has to go on, the city has to move forward, our projects have to be implemented, and I personally intend to make sure that they are. And I hope staff is ready to work really hard to make sure that they get done. That's it with that.
I understand. We have this money from, if we, if we didn't have this, if we didn't receive these funds from the Department of Finance, we wouldn't be sitting here talking about this issue. That goes on, but we won't have the funds to invest in any account.
Right.
So.
And in 10 years, we have serious problems.
We do have serious problems, regardless of doing this or not. We will have a serious problem, because our total liability in 10 or by 20, 35 is $670 million, $660. But anyways, in any case.
Before, Mr. Mayor, this money will sit in the account anyway. I mean, it's not that if we don't do anything, we'll be there. If next year we feel that we need the money, so we can pull it out.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we are not obligated to continue this. We will see this coming year what will happen. And I'm obligated myself to, I mean, this is me, $26,500,000 one time, not 35, I'm not committing myself to any other money until we discuss this further at a later time. So I want to offer the resolution, or, you know, the $26,500,000, with considering the reserve fund to be minimum of 25 percent, to be on a safe side as we saw.
That's the motion.
Yes.
Will you second it?
Yes, no, Mr. Najarian?
I'll second it, but, but, Mr. Mayor, I do want to, I do want to have a unanimous vote on this. This is a big decision. If you've got objections, I want to hear something, you know, rather than this vague, we could use the money somewhere else, and it's a big amount of money. If you've got a better place for this money, if you've got a better way to protect ourselves from the PERS increases, please, now is the time to know. And if you're going to vote against it, you should be urging me to vote against it, too. This isn't like, oh, I know it's going to pass, but I'm going to take, you know, some other position. You're not saying we should give it back to GWP, do you, like Mr. Kadikian?
Look.
I mean, I just, we should be unanimous on this. Let me hear your position, though.
My position from the day one, which this was presented to me, was the same. My position didn't change. And I didn't know where the votes were at that time.
I didn't say you changed.
No, that's what I'm saying. I mean, you're implying that now that you know it's going to pass, you're trying to vote against it. That's not the case. When this was presented to me in closed session, and, not closed session, I was briefed on it, my position was the same. It did not change. And my concerns are, as I mentioned, I, you know, I, I'm not comfortable with investing $26 million in a, in a, in an account or a fund that was, it's, it's new, it's like three years. I know it's being used for some other, other, other companies or what have you. These funds are being used all the time, but this is a new, new concept. So my concern, we lost money. Everybody, you know, cities lost money in stock. Look what happened to Washington Mutual and all their 401Ks. And one, one, one downshift, one downturn in the economy, they lost their life savings. Everybody lost everything. I'm not saying this is going to happen. I want to be cautious. I, that's why I voted for establishing the account. But my, my understanding was, we're going to wait until the account is established and discuss the different options. And I'm going around the same circle, I'm saying the same thing, because my position is the same. It's not that I'm changing from one to another. From the day one, I was not comfortable with investing $36 million in an irrevocable trust. I know we can take that money and spend it on PERS, but you cannot spend it on anything else. So when you put this money in, in PERS account, irrevocable trust, that's what's going to happen. And I, I understand your position. We are different people and different mentality, different mindset. We can't agree on everything, every time. I know you want to have a unanimous vote, and I wish I could, I could do that. That's why I'm saying maybe a smaller amount to test drive. In two years, nothing is going to change. This, this is not going to accumulate that much interest in two years, that you say, oh, I'm losing $5 million in two years. It's, it's a couple of hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you, you do the numbers. It's 1.3 million a year, it's 100,000 a month, right? So in a year or two, instead of 1.3, you can make 700, 800,000. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to be cautious, that's all. I'm not saying don't do it at all. I know we have PERS obligations, but this option, I want to, I'm, you know, repeating myself, that this option will not take care of the liabilities that we have in five years, 10 years, 20 years. This is a little solution that helps maybe a million or two against a $50 million bill. So what I want to know is, later, it's not, it's not on the agenda tonight, is how are we going to counter that? How are we going to pay 50 or 70 million in 2027? So I know we project our, our income is going to increase, but these are our projections, and we know what happens with the economy when, when there's a downturn. And we all know that there will be a downturn. So that's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not against the concept.
Mr. Mayor, but we can pull it out.
Anytime.
You're not, you're not obligated to keep it there forever. But I just want to read you from Highmark, the company which will work on this, that they are conservative than they are moderate. I'm reading from the moderate interest rate of four, one year has been 10.1, for five years, the average was 7.2 percent, and 10 years, they had 4.4 percent. And from inception to date, it has 5.6 percent, which is from 2004. So this is better than 1 percent, which we will leave this money for a year. So next year, if we see there's any danger, or we don't like it, or we need the money for another obligation, or projects that, that we like to do, so we, we will pay that for PERS, and the money will be in the general account. The similar balance of it will be in the general account, and we'll use it for other issues, like parks, or affordable housing, or whatever. I don't know what we can use it for. But I think for a year, we have to try different ways.
We will not have $30 million next year in your general account to spend on anything else. Let me put it that way. But, but again, I, I don't want to make this a, the intention is great.
So can I say my, make a motion?
Of course. You made the motion already.
I did?
Yes.
But I just want to make sure that it's $26,500,000 one time, investment of $26,500,000. And with the understanding that there is a minimum of balance of 25 percent of general fund. And that's my motion anyway.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Council members, Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Garbedian?
No.
Next item, please. Next item on the agenda is a hearing. 9A is Director of Public Works regarding final engineers' report and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessment for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscaping, Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2017, 18. A1 is a resolution approving the engineers' annual levy report. Two is a resolution ordering the levy and collection of assessments.
I'll open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. I would defer to Mr. Galanian, as this is an item that has come before you, and it's in terms of scheduling for the Landscape Lighting Assessment District. And at this point, it's that protest hearing time.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, remember, City Council, briefly, on June 20th of this year, your council adopted resolutions that initiated the proceedings and gave a preliminary approval of the engineers' report to levy and collect charges and assessments, and set the date and time and place of today to hear any objections to the North San Fernando Corridor Landscape Maintenance District establishment for fiscal years 17, 18. We have not received any protest at our office, so if you'd like to open the public hearing and see if there are any objections.
Do we have any cards on this item? No?
No.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And is there any comments?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council members, Agajanian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sorry, Devine?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Garbedian?
Yes.
What's next, please?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited time, is not part of this agenda. Speakers allow five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. See Magr Mayor for the item to the appropriate department for an investigation and report. No cards have been submitted for this, well, one card, one card has been submitted for this portion.
For oral communication?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Debbie?
Good evening, council members. My name is Deborah Jesky, and perhaps some of you remember from last week's long hearing about the appeal. We have the longest running case in history to build on a legal residential lot, over seven years. Mr. Mayor, I want to commend you and thank you on your ability to listen to both sides, to act in an ethical and fair manner. Your intellect to see what was really going on was outstanding. You are an excellent leader. These people did not want anything built on the lot, and they fought for seven years. As a descendant of the Mayflower and a daughter of the American Revolution, it was instilled in me years ago, since I was a child, that you do not let a person or a government take away your rights. We are protected under the Bill of Rights and the Constitution in this country, and we are grateful for that. Ms. Devine, this is not to attack you, but to give you an insight so that you can become the best leader that you can be. It was obvious, not only to us, but also to many constituents, that you and Mr. Sananian had made up your mind to send this project back. Did I wake you up? You had misstated many facts regarding that case. The chain link fence is four feet, not six feet. You also stated that within the list of homes in 300 feet, that there were 11 out of 24 homes that were less than 2,000 square feet. I mean, you, you stated 13, but in actuality, there's 11 that are less than 2,000 square feet. You also said 10 are larger. Now, in my book, 13 and 10 is not 24. When the fact is, 11 are smaller and 13 are larger. So 11 and 13 is 24. You also stated that there's a marginal reduction of 85 square feet to the mass and scale. According to my math, the design of 2656 minus 2515 makes it 141 square feet less, or 18 and a half percent reduction in the mass and scale. Mr. Quintero, at the previous city council meeting, said he could allow for 20 percent more. You said 20 percent of 2172 was 2,300. Mr. Garbedian corrected that and said 20, no, it's actually around 2,500. But it's 2606. I printed out the council's decision, and those were based on the appellant's, what they said at that meeting, not the facts. It said that the majority were single-family homes. I think you could see from the bulletin board with the red, the majority are not single-family homes. It was said that the appellant's had submitted 36 signatures as, as approved to, in their support, when actually two took out their support, so that made it 34. It said we had 30. We had over 100 signatures in support to uphold the DRB. It's beyond me that you do not respect the staff and architects and their findings. Architects go to school for five years. They have to do a three-year apprenticeship, and then they have to take a written exam to get a license. Yet, many of you think that you know more than them. And the reason I'm saying this is I do not want another citizen of Glendale to go through the hell that we have been through. It is not right. It's obvious that some couldn't understand that the house had to be a certain mass, which is length, and a certain height to protect and retain the retaining walls from being in noncompliance. The home was cut down to 2315 square feet. That's coming off of the back of the house. Nobody can see that, and Mr. Mayor understood that, and I appreciate it. I am here to help you fix some of the problems in the city. The DRB, there was one member there that continually made suggestions cost us $30,000 to $40,000 that never could meet the city code. There's a problem there, and I pointed that out to the city attorney years ago. So I suggest that the DRB be made up of a mixture, not just architects or, you know, an attorney, but there really should be a Realtor on that board, because they know the city more than any of you. Thank you.
I have no more cards. What's next, please?
Any new business?
Any new business? Any new business, Mr. City Attorney? No?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Sir, second?
For a second?
Second.
Thank you.